And then Commissioner Farley to lead us in the pledge.
Let's pause for a moment and call to mind those that are close to us, our friends, acquaintances, all of those that are in need of healing and prayer, also for our servicemen and women, and all the people that are affected by the disaster in Japan. And also let's pray for the repose of the soul of Tina Stewart of MTSU, and especially for the healing in her family. And also today for Commissioner Turner's daughter, Kinsley, as she recovers from the surgery that you had earlier today, though we just ask for your healing touch, dear Lord. Good and gracious God, you have provided us today with what we needed most, the gift of life. We pray in gratitude for that gift, and we hope we have used it well to promote healing and goodness. Help us to be aware of the beauty of the world, the suffering and needs of those around us, and your infinite love. We ask for clarity this evening as we attend to the business at hand and try to be good stewards of your goodness. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
If you would, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer, Commissioner Black, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner P., Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Jernigan, Commissioner Farley, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Sandlin, Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Baum, Commissioner Coggan, Commissioner Young, Commissioner Phillips, Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Ely, Commissioner Gooch, Commissioner Serenho. Twenty-one present.
Thank you very much. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting, the motion considering its approval. Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I move that they be approved as mailed.
You have a second from Commissioner Cook. Do you want to have any changes or corrections? All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Tonight we have two resolutions of recognition, and first I'm going to call on Commissioner Sandlin to read a resolution regarding National Surveyors Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, audience, we have with us tonight Mr. Leonard T. Tassar with the Tennessee Association of Professional Surveyors, and I have a resolution to read to you for recognition for the National Surveyors Week. Resolution reads, "Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize those persons and organizations that unconditionally serve others and consistently have a positive impact on the people of Rutherford County. Whereas it was come to our attention to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that March 20th through the 27th, 2011, has been named National Surveyors Week across the nation. And whereas the role of the surveyors have been and remains a vital importance to the development of the United States. And whereas since the colonial days of this nation, surveyors have been leaders in the community and country, statesmen, influence citizens, and shaped the culture and culture standards. And whereas former surveyors include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, Daniel Boone, McMeriwether Lewis, and William Clark. And whereas it was the work of the surveyors to determine the boundaries of land, the greatest economic asset of the colonies that become the United States. And whereas new technologies are constantly modernizing this honor and learned profession, including the surveys which is used in mapping and charting, as well as the photo imagery the science is using aerial photographers, measurement of map production. And whereas many services are provided through the surveying equipment and technologies, including satellite-born remote sensing devices and automated positioning, measuring, recording, and plotting equipment. And whereas the estimate of the third week of March, or established the third week in March, as National Surveyors Week is a fitting tribute to all surveyors. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the week of March 20th through March 27th, 2011, be recognized as National Surveyors Week in Rutherford County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners encourages all citizens to observe National Surveyors Week each year with appropriate ceremonies and activities paying tribute to the professionalism of the surveyors and the contributing of their society. Resolve this 17th day of March, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I so move."
Second from Mr. Turner. All in favor of that, please say aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Sandlin, for that, and thank the surveyors for their continued contribution to the progress of this great country. Let's see, next we have a resolution that will be presented by Commissioner Turner regarding the 40th anniversary of the Rotary Club of Smyrna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask the Smyrna Commissioners, anyone here that is present with the Rotary Club of Smyrna, to please join me up front. I was given the privilege of reading this resolution of recognition from Commissioner Stevens. He's actually a member of the Rotary Club of Smyrna, but felt that it'd be better if he stood up here with some of his friends in the Rotary Club than reading this, so I'm honored to do it. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize those persons and organizations that unconditionally serve others and consistently have a positive impact on the people of Rutherford County. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rotary Club of Smyrna is one such outstanding organization, recently celebrating 40 years of service to Smyrna. Whereas the Rotary Club of Smyrna was first chartered by Rotary International on March 22nd, 1971, organized by 37 local business and professional men, and rechartered as the Rotary Club of Smyrna, Tennessee, USA, on August 1st, 1991. Whereas throughout the past 40 years, the Rotary Club of Smyrna has provided and continues to provide support for many programs, including literacy, the Senior Citizen Center, Smyrna Laverne Food Bank, and hosting Tennessee Aviation Days air shows. Whereas Rotary Club of Smyrna members provide much-needed funding for numerous non-profit organizations, such as the American Red Cross and Meals on Wheels. They were instrumental in the acquisition and development of the Rotary Soccer Park. And whereas the Rotary Club of Smyrna serves the youth of our community, acting as the PTA for Smyrna West Alternative School, constructing the Lee Victory Park Pavilion and providing playground equipment, funding, and funding for youth-oriented programs such as the Boys and Girls Club, the Sister City Student Exchange Program, and scholarships to local high school students and nursing students at Motlow College. Whereas each of the founding members recognized the need to develop ways to serve others and address critical issues such as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in Smyrna and throughout the world. Whereas for 40 years, the members of the Rotary Club of Smyrna have been faithful servants dedicated to serving people both in the Smyrna area and around the globe with great love and selflessness, all to the benefit of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rotary Club of Smyrna be recognized and congratulated for its loyal and devoted service over the past 40 years. And be it further resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners wishes great success and satisfaction for the members of the Rotary Club of Smyrna as they continue to serve for the coming years, both in the town of Smyrna and Rutherford County. Resolve this 17th day of March, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I so move."
Second back. Commissioner Allen, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. And Commissioner Stevens, just add to that list of seconds.
I wanted abstained from the vote because I'm a member of the club.
Oh, you're really pushing the code of ethics. Excuse me. All right, then. Commissioner Allen, second motion. Commissioner Stevens just wants to let us know since he is a member of that club, he is abstained from that vote. Thank you. So duly noted. And thank the Rotary Club for the many great work that they continue to do, and many of us recognize that and fully note that. Okay. Next we have public comments, and tonight we have one person that wishes to speak, and Mr. Todd may come forward and give us his name and address.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. The Associated Press reports on the use of surplus revenue. There are increasing signs here in Rutherford County that stringent rules suspiciously originating from outside the state of Tennessee are making it extremely hard to use surplus revenue for paying off normal costs of government that are itemized in several county funds. Why is this happening? Especially during a time of economic crisis, when an emergency expenditure is needed, when 21% of the money appropriated to the annual budget is not being used for the purposes that are specified in the budgetary appropriation, and when the total balance of our surplus revenue is $81 million? This is still the taxpayers' money because it was not used for the purposes originally specified. Constitutionally, Rutherford County citizens could vote, as citizens in Colorado did recently, to force the government to refund the taxpayers' unused money. The other choice for us would be to use our surplus money to pay the major cost of building a new high school rather than submitting to a huge bonded debt. It is apparent that these stringent rules are tying the hands of local governments, preventing us from using this surplus revenue, which is rightfully ours, in the manner which we, the taxpayers, choose. The state should investigate and determine if metro government is behind imposing these unconstitutional financial policies. Similar questions have been raised in an Associated Press article written by Melinda Delatte and published in the Daily News Journal on March 10th. She said, quote, "While budget deficits threaten to cripple government services across the country, a handful of states with billions of dollars of surplus revenue socked away in rainy day funds for troubled financial times are discovering they can't use that money to offset their cuts or deficits in their budgets. Stringent unconstitutional metro rules have tied the hands of officials preventing many states or counties from using their surplus revenue. Metro training centers, schools for socialism, appear to be guided by the University of Tennessee Municipal Technical Assistance Services, UTMTAS, or the County Technical Assistance Services, CTAS. County finance directors and trustees are among those who attend these schools. Taxpayers of this county urge the county commission to work toward freeing up our surplus revenue funds and returning them to the budgetary process for the next fiscal year, where they can be used for our benefit, therefore restoring transparency of bookkeeping." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next agenda item is elections and confirmations, and Commissioner Phillips will handle that item.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. We need to elect notaries. You have the list on your desk in front of you, and I move that they be approved.
Second back, Commissioner Jernigan. All in favor of that list, please say aye. Any opposed?
Item number two, we need to fill the vacancy on the BZA to fill the unexpired term of Tony Webb Jr., and that term expires in October of 2013. Steering Committee received four applications and is recommending Joe Macheteau, and I so move.
Second back, Commissioner Farley. Any other discussion? All in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
We need to confirm the reappointment of Don Alexander to the Smyrna-Rutherford County Airport Authority Board of Directors, and I move for his approval.
Second, Commissioner Black. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
We also need to appoint a judicial commissioner, and Patrice Moore has been recommended, and I move for her approval.
And a second from Commissioner Sereno. All in favor of that, please say aye. Thank you very much. That was unanimous. There is no unfinished business, and we'll start the reports by the standing committees. There is no report from the Purchasing Committee, and Mrs. Ely, we do have about 12 minutes to start the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report.
We will begin with the General Fund Budget Amendments, item K-2A. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. From the Insurance Department, increased revenue, contribution, and gift, $6,255. Increased expenditures, other charges, $6,255. This is to recognize fees from vendors who participated in the Employee Appreciation Day. Correctional Work Center, from unassigned fund balance, $50,000, to utilities, $50,000. Pet Adoption and Welfare Services, increased revenue of contributions and gifts, $12,702, to increased expenditures for part-time personnel, $11,800, and the related benefits. Fire and Rescue, increased revenue, contributions, and gifts of $4,200. Increased expenditures, other contracted services, $4,200. The Contributions and Gifts item, residents of the Summer Place subdivision collected this money to have a fire hydrant installed, and then the increased expenditure is to pay Consolidated Utility District for installing it. Juvenile Court, from unassigned fund balance, $16,000, to other contracted services, $16,000. This is a result of extraordinarily heavy workload, and this is to pay the magistrate and the guardian ad litem. Transfers in, increased revenue, $10,331, to increase to our reserve for restricted for capital projects, $10,331. This is closing out the ambulance station project on Manchester Highway. The Jail, increased revenue, contributions of $25,000, increased expenditures, maintenance and repair of equipment, $25,000. This amendment is to recognize from the Murfreesboro Police Department for the fingerprinting agreement. Resolve this 17th day of March, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second back, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes in.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passed.
Item K-2B, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the United States Department of Justice under the Solving Cold Cases with DNA Program for the Sheriff's Department. Whereas Rutherford County has been made aware of available funds from the Solving Cold Cases with DNA Program grant through the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, National Institute of Justice. And whereas the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department desires to submit an application in the amount of $229,133.74 for said grant, which offers assistance to states and units of local government to identify, review, and investigate Uniform Crime Report Part One, Violent Crime Cold Cases that have the potential to be solved through DNA analysis, and to locate and analyze biological evidence associated with these cases. Whereas the grant is for a period of 18 months and requires no local matching funds. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, National Institute of Justice. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to seek funding in the amount of $229,133.74 under the Solving Cold Cases with DNA Program. And Commissioners, I do need to remind you, this would include one new position. Resolve this 17th day of March, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Schaefer. Questions or discussion? Commissioner Turner?
Just real quick, the new position, would that be something that would just be completely funded from the grant as far as the salary position, or did I just stay with the grant? Thank you.
This would be a temporary full-time position. It's not necessarily an ongoing position after this grant expires.
That's what I was looking for, was clarification on that. I didn't know if it was a continued position after that, if it was just a temporary one.
No, it will not be. Any other questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2C, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement for postage meters for the Health Department. Whereas the Rutherford County Health Department Director currently has lease agreements with Pitney Bowles Global Financial Services for two postage meters, with one meter being located at 100 West Burton Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and the other postage meter being located at 108 David Collins Drive, Smyrna, Tennessee. And whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into new lease agreements with Pitney Bowles Global Financial Services for the postage meters, with the rental of the postage meter located at 100 West Burton Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, being $195 per month for 60 months, and the rental of the postage meter located at 108 David Collins Drive, Smyrna, Tennessee, being $110 per month for 60 months. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the state and local term rental agreements with Pitney Bowles Global Financial Services. Copies of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for postage meter rentals for the Rutherford County Health Department at a cost of $195 per month for 60 months for the Murfreesboro facility, and a cost of $110 per month for 60 months for the Smyrna facility. Commissioners, I will say that there was some discussion in budget leasing versus purchasing. The Director of the Health Department, Mrs. Garrett, has confirmed that the United States Postal Service has made it illegal to purchase the postage meters. Postage meters are highly regulated. They are considered as currency. Resolve this 17th day of March, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Call on Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to second that motion, first of all, and just explain briefly that the Health and Education Committee, where this normally would have started, it was not presented to our committee because Ms. Garrett did not know on our last meeting that the contract was about to run out. And when she found that out, she called me, and after discussing this with Ms. Nolan as she did, I went ahead and there was no new money, and it was a cost-saving thing as well, we suspected that it was. And so I went ahead and approved that, and as Ms. Ely just told you, it went through budget. I just wanted the other members of the Committee of Health and Ed to know why we did not see that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Ely.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Okay, Ms. Ely, we have time for one more.
Item K-2D, a resolution authorizing funding for the design for additions and renovations to Eagleville High School. Whereas the Rutherford County school system is experiencing high enrollment, especially at the high school level, and projections indicate that the enrollment will continue to increase over the next several years. And whereas Eagleville High School currently has multiple portable classrooms, and the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to construct additional classrooms and auditorium and make renovations to the cafeteria with Phase 2 of the renovations to include another 10 classrooms. Whereas the Board of Education desires to proceed with the design phase for both Eagleville additions in order to have firm costs for the additions. Whereas it is being proposed to provide funding internally within the school building program for $350,000 for the design fees for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Eagleville additions, with the source of the funding to come from savings from the Oakland and Whitworth Buchanan Middle School projects. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that $350,000 be provided through internal borrowing in the school building program for the design of Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Eagleville school additions and renovations, with the source of funding to come from savings from the Oakland and Whitworth Buchanan Middle School projects, subject to the approval of a budget amendment by the Rutherford County Board of Education and the Rutherford County Commission. Resolve this 17th day of March, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jones. Likely recognize you.
Commissioners, I'd like to remind you that most of you have heard the arguments for this project already in other prior meetings, so I'm not going to repeat all of those things for you tonight. But I also want to remind you that this money is not new money that we're approving. So it is coming out of that savings from the middle school projects that happened a couple of years ago. And I would also like to state that since I'm a teacher at Eagle School, that there is a conflict, but I will be voting on with my conscience.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ely. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is a rezoning and conditional use permit request, and the number is 11-A001. Mr. Bill McDowell, 10147 Highway 99. The existing zoning is R-15, and they're requesting zoning for services, a conditional use permit for office, retail shops, self-service storage facility, wholesale establishment, fabricated metal products and machinery, a specialty shop, motor vehicle service, and a general repair and service shop, and a single-family dwelling on a site of approximately 9.56 acres, and Mr. Demossi will explain this more fully.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. As was stated, this property is located along Highway 99. The applicant is proposing to construct a commercial building of about 10,000 square feet in size to be used for general retail, office space, and a maintenance shop. Business that the applicant is in is directional drilling, boring under roads, streams, rivers, those kind of things. The primary building material, the front facade, will be masonry with metal used for the sides and rear. On your tables, you'll find a packet of information that looks like- On your tables, you'll find a packet of information that looks like this, just so everybody, it should be there right in front of you for you to review as we go through this. The site will also have underground utilities and one entrance on the Highway ninety-nine. And again, there's information in this packet about some details about the site and the architecture in a little more detail. There was a neighborhood meeting for this development on Monday, January third of this year. The surrounding property is zoned R-15, is currently vacant, a third of a mile to the west on Highway ninety-nine at the intersection of Jackson Ridge Road. There are some parcel-zoned services for mini warehouse and maintenance services, and also between Murfreesboro and Eagleville, there are several other parcels on Highway ninety-nine that are zoned commercial or residential. There was a, there wasn't, there's a fair amount of discussion on this at the Planning Commission meeting, really amongst the Commissioners and the applicant. No one really from the area, as I recall, was there to speak. Most of the concerns centered around some of the uses that were being proposed. One of the hindrances of this site is the fact that the water service will be able to support domestic water, but not for a fire hydrant. So some of the uses that were proposed, the Commission felt were a little too intense for that. So on the last page of that package you have, you'll notice that there were a couple of items that were crossed off, basically a larger department store, convenience, sales, and service. There's also soils limitations with the property, there's really only so much that you can do on that property with the amount of soils they have for septic tank disposal. So with that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this by unanimous vote by ten-four and zero against. The applicant is present, the representative and a design engineer, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Does Commissioner Schaefer?
Is it just down the road at Jackson Ridge, is that where the mini warehouses are?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it's pretty close there.
Right, just, yeah, actually, on the map, you can almost, it's just a little further on this map, just a little further down there.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
And this is just for my edification, I'm sure the other twenty Commissioners here all know what it is. What is a double vituminous surface treatment?
Asphalt.
Asphalt?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not made out of coal, huh?
No, sir.
Any other questions of Mr. Demosi? Okay, there are no questions then, we're going to declare the public hearing open with respect to this request by Mr. McDowell. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this project? Please come forward, give us your name and address. Mr. Murfree.
Mayor Burgess, members of the County Commission, I'm Brick Murfree of the law firm of Murfree and Murfree, and our firm is located at eight-oh-five South Church Street in Suite twenty-one here in Murfreesboro. I'm representing the applicant, Bill McDowell, who owns the nine-point-five-six acres on Highway ninety-nine in Salem Pike, which is subject to this rezoning request tonight. Currently, it's zoned R-15, and we're asking to have it rezoned for commercial. And in front of y'all is a development pattern booklet, which shows the commitments of Mr. McDowell in conjunction with this commercial development. Mr. Jamie Reed with SEC will walk y'all through the details of it, he can answer questions about asphalt or whatever else. I'm a lawyer, I don't know about asphalt, so. But we did, we had a neighborhood meeting. I sent a letter out to eleven of the closest property owners, nine of which showed up to the meeting at my office. We held that meeting on the third of January. There was a lot of discussion there, and I think all in all, the neighbors were very supportive of the plan once we were able to sit down and discuss it with them. Mrs. Tiffany Jones, the Commissioner in that area, was present at that neighborhood meeting as well, so she was there to answer questions, and we had a good bit of feedback, and I think it was very positive. In addition to that meeting, I mailed out a follow-up letter, told the neighbors to call me. I sent a copy of the proposed building, the renderings of it, out to the neighbors as well. There were some follow-up phone calls that I fielded with some questions, and I think I answered those, and everybody felt pretty comfortable about things. Mr. Jamie Reed with SEC also had several meetings with the neighbors, had follow-up conversations, and called all the neighbors, all those eleven property owners personally, and talked to them about the project. Jeff King, who's the property owner that owns the property to the north and the west, shares two boundary lines for this property, sent a letter in support to Ms. Imzley with the Planning Department. If anybody's going to be impacted by this development, it's him. He, like I said, owns two of the four property lines, and he's been our biggest supporter. And I had a lot of discussions with him about the project, and he's on board. So a few highlights of our plan are, we're, it's a heavily treeed lot, we intend to keep those trees, we're going to have a fifteen-foot buffer between the front and the side property lines, and we're going to keep that green space, and so there'll be a buffer in both distance, and we'll have that greenery as well. So if there is development next door at some point, there isn't right now, there'll be that buffer for future people who might want to move out there or do something. Frankly, the septic situation's going to dictate what goes out there, they're in a lot of soils, so a lot of the kind of things, like a restaurant or something like that, just aren't going to be feasible. And Mr. Reed will talk a little bit more about that, can answer septic questions. But without further ado, I'm going to let Jamie Reed speak. I'll be here to answer any questions at the end. Jamie can answer any questions from an engineering standpoint, and Mr. McDowell is present. Do y'all have questions for the property owner? So I appreciate it, and I hope you'll vote for.
Thank you, Mr. Murfree. Next, Mr. Reed would like to speak.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Jamie Reed with SEC. I'm going to go over a brief overview of this booklet, kind of reiterate what Doug and Brick kind of outlined real quick. Starting on page one, kind of gives you an idea of the mini storages down to the south of that, and you can see Bill McDowell's site being rezoned on Highway ninety-nine. It's the lot four of Mary T. Holton Estates property, from R-15 zoning to commercial services. Site's also located just south of the Rockville Elementary and Middle School. Sheets two and three, you can see, of course, we took these pictures when it was, of course, snowing along Highway ninety-nine, the south view and the north view, and then the front shot of the property. But as you can see on sheet three there, it's heavily treeed, like Brick and Doug talked. We're going to try to maintain majority of the trees on the site. We've maintained a fifteen-foot tree buffer around the entire site also. Sheet four, you get an idea of the site, the building, proposed ten-thousand-square-foot building. We've got concrete paving out front for the cars to park, and asphalt paving for the trucks and stuff to make their turns and movements and stuff through the building and around the building. Also, we've got on this site plant here you're looking at, we've got, he's going to also screen, place a brick screen wall up on the right-hand side of the building to screen, HVAC pads and stuff like that will be shown. And also, the dumpster pad will be in the rear of the building, it won't be up front or on the side, it'll be in the rear of the building. And also, he's allowed a five-foot, or a four-foot buffer out front of the building and the sidewalks to allow plantings and stuff like that to take place. Going over to sheet number five, some of the proposed site characteristics. All the parking has been designed to be located at least ten feet from the public right-of-ways of Highway ninety-nine and property lines. In addition, adequate room for the foundation plantings at the entrance of the building has been provided to help soften the building, provided defined base to enhance the architecture. The site is proposed to have one access point on the Highway ninety-nine, and that access point currently exists now. He's just going to modify that to two lanes of traffic versus one lane of traffic. And the dumpster enclosures will be constructed of some type of opaque or PVC-type material matching the building materials. And refuge will be handled by utilizing on-site dumpsters on the site. Sheet number six is also some additional proposed site characteristics. The site will utilize septic fields for its sewer service. This is what Brick was talking about earlier, the site is limited to what it can be placed on the site because of the septic system. It's basically got one septic field that can basically treat one normal residential house, so it's not like he's going to feed a restaurant or anything like it. So whatever's placed out there is going to be like an office, some type of office with one restroom and something like that. And any on-site lighting will be required to have no more than one candle foot at the property line. All on-site utilities are to be underground, all mechanical equipment is also to be screened. And the proposed setbacks for the development are eighty feet in the front, ten on the sides, and twenty in the rear. And the water service to the site comes from the rear of the property from low road. And Doug brought up an issue about the fire hydrant earlier, we're going to, the owners, once the CUD places their main water line along Highway ninety-nine, the owners have agreed that they'll place a fire hydrant at the time that's placed there, they're in agreement. They would place one now if there's a water line there, but there's not a water line currently there. Sheet number seven is a, the top of the page there, you'll see a picture of their proposed building with the glasses, with the exception of the garage door in the front, they will have no garage door in the front like there, all the garage doors will be on the side of the building. And also, the HVAC pads and dumpsters will be screened. The maximum height of the building will be thirty-five feet, the building entryways will be well-defined and easily identifiable. The primary building material for the, masonry for the front elevations of any of the buildings. Sheet number eight kind of shows you different type of masonry materials and stuff, and metal for the roof elevations. Sheet number nine kind of goes over some of the landscaping, proposed landscaping requirements. Landscaping will be in conformance with the Rutherford County's landscaping ordinance. Foundation plantings will be utilized to complement the building's architecture. All signs also will be well landscaped to further enhance the site's overall appearance. And like I said earlier, HVAC units and transformer pads will also be screened by landscaping. And sheet number ten is the sheet that Doug was talking about earlier that we marked off from the Planning Commission meeting with, we marked off E and F, and it was mainly due to the, you know, the septic, there is no, there's not enough septic system out there to treat that type of business mainly. And the majority of all the listings there, the uses, are basically his establishment, you know, offices, retail shop, he's looking at selling some of the stuff, it's, they're going to be fabricating some specialties-type stuff, working on motor vehicles and his work equipment, so all that kind of pertains to the, to the same thing he's asking for. I'll be glad to answer any questions now. Anybody has any?
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Reed.
All right.
Are there others in the audience that would like to speak for or against this project? Does anyone else wish to speak? If there's no one else coming forward to speak, then we're going to declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion concerning this request? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to approve this project as proposed.
Do we have a second? That was Commissioners Sandlin and others. All right, is there any discussion? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. I just would like to say that I was at the community meeting and everyone, you know, there was questions, of course, and I feel like they were answered appropriately. I only received one phone call, and I feel like that was, that was just due to, they had some concerns about future uses after Mr. McDowell might move on, or, you know, different changes that might be happen to that, but I feel like we could probably make that concern about any of the properties that we approve. And so he was okay with the rezoning after that, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? We have a motion, a second, then. All of you in favor of approving this request, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is unanimous. Now, Mr., let's see, yes.
Just one brief announcement for the Commissioners, I just wanted to let everybody know, and for those who may be watching, the, our comprehensive plan process, we're going to be having another public hearing in front of our Planning Commission on October, I'm sorry, April the eleventh this year. That'll be at six o'clock, it's our regular Planning Commission meeting, it's April the eleventh, and that'll be right in this room, so I just wanted to make that known to everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Demosi. Commissioner Ely, I believe we're ready to continue.
We are ready for item K-2E, a resolution amending a contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health for mental health evaluation and treatment services for criminal defendants charged with misdemeanors only. Whereas at the regular meeting on December seventeen, two thousand and nine, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health to establish agreed rates and ensure payment for the evaluations and treatment necessary to evaluations ordered for defendants charged only with misdemeanor crimes. And whereas Rutherford County and the Tennessee Department of Mental Health desire to extend the term of the contract to June thirty, two thousand and twelve, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor be authorized to execute Amendment One to the contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the billing and payment for mental health evaluation and treatment services for defendants charged only with misdemeanors, with the term of the contract being extended to June thirty, two thousand and twelve. And as a reminder to those Commissioners who were here in December seventeen, two thousand and nine, and for the benefit of the new Commissioners, I am going to read from our resolution from that commission meeting, just a couple of paragraphs. Judges in general sessions, criminal and circuit courts have the authority to order mental health evaluation and treatment for criminal defendants. And during, at this time, it was the last legislative session, which would have been previous to two thousand and nine, but its public chapter five-thirty-one has been enacted, making counties responsible for the cost of outpatient and inpatient mental health evaluations and treatment court ordered for defendants charged with misdemeanors. So counties are ordered to pay these charges, and it is four-hundred-and-fifty dollars per day. Resolved this seventeenth day of March, two thousand and eleven. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner Sereno. Okay, is there any other questions? Please, Commissioner Schaefer.
I would ask Finance Director, if she knows off the top of her head, how much have we spent on these mental evaluations since they have started? If not, if, you know, I guess it's kind of off the cuff. If not, then maybe you can get it later on and put it in our boxes, just so we know.
Let's say this, it's substantial, and we are right now in the middle of a substantial dispute with billings that we just currently received, so we'll give the Budget Committee a full update on this, and all of you, before we pay another bill. Do we have a motion on that?
Yes.
Yeah, we did get a motion, and a second from Commissioner Sereno. We're not happy with what's happening here, just put that mildly. Okay, all of you in favor, and let's see, this is just a contract extension, so we're not appropriating money here. All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let's reflect, how many do we have? One, two, two noes. Thank you.
Item K-2F, a resolution amending a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Human Services for child support enforcement. Whereas at the regular meeting on June eighth, two thousand and eight, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Human Services for the provision of four-D child support services. And whereas Rutherford County and the Tennessee Department of Human Services desire to extend the grant contract to June thirty, two thousand and twelve. And whereas the maximum liability of the state under the grant for the period of July one, two thousand and eight, through June thirty, two thousand and twelve, shall not exceed one-hundred-thirty-thousand-one-hundred-sixty dollars. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor be authorized to execute Amendment Four to the contract with the Tennessee Department of Human Services, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One and incorporated herein as if set forth herein at length verbatim, extending the grant contract to June thirty, two thousand and twelve. Resolved this seventeenth day of March, two thousand and eleven. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second. Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item K-2G, a resolution authorizing a contribution agreement with the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. Whereas at the regular meeting on April 16, 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee to execute a contribution agreement with the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service to assist in providing funding of $10,000 for a part-time position for the Rutherford County Soil Conservation District. And whereas Rutherford County and the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service desire to continue the grant for the period of March 1, 2011 through February 28, 2012, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute the contribution agreement with the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein verbatim, for the purpose of delivering the conservation technical assistance for planning and implementation of conservation programs. Resolved this 17th day of March 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we're ready for the Health and Education Committee, a report by Chairman Jeff Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three or four housekeeping measures here to inform the commission. First of all, a week from last night, next Wednesday night, the University of Tennessee is offering a seminar on the education funding, BEP, and otherwise. It is in Franklin. Two good things about it. First of all, it's free. Second, the mayor is driving. So, if you'd like to go, there is a dinner, which I understand is also free. It's stunning. But at any rate, we're going to leave here about 5:00. So, if you'd like to ride with us, you're welcome to do so. That's next Wednesday, this coming Wednesday night. A number of us yesterday had the privilege of attending the Rutherford County School Teachers of the Year banquet, get-together, if you will, yesterday afternoon. There were 45 schools, I think, and therefore 45 teachers. A number of us were there. It was really terrific. And the Teachers of the Year, the Level Teacher of the Year, there are three of those, there are 45, one in each building. But Cindy Klisch from the McFadden School won the elementary, voted by her peers. Amy Guthrie, Central Magnet, the Middle School, and Sharon Truax, the Secondary Level Teacher of the Year, Smyrna High School, and she's Rutherford County Teacher of the Year. And also, Scott, I don't get a chance to say anything to you very much. It's just totally positive, but the Daily News Journal has a terrific article in Pittsburgh today, a very positive look at those 45 teachers, and it is appreciated, sir. Also, this past week, a good thing, but I guess sort of combined with a bad thing, but it really was a good thing, and that is Shakobia Barbie for Riverdale High School won the Miss Basketball Award, which is the highest award that can be offered in AA, AA, and AAA girls' basketball. We will either honor her, or it is a possibility she will be honored at the school board. But obviously, we only had three or four days to prepare. So, we'll take care of that next time if we get the opportunity to. Also, it was important to many of us, I suppose, and the director of school spoke to us the last time we were here. His contract was extended one year. The vote was seven nothing. I was in the audience. They did not ask me to vote. One other thing, and this is really good news, and I just wanted to share it with you. We talked about it at our committee meeting, but I wanted to read you an email that I got from Mr. James Evans of the school board. And this is really something that just can cement to us, I guess, what a great county we live in. I'll paraphrase here a little bit, but the Rutherford County Schools and Rutherford County Government combined employee giving to United Way came in at $203,368.48. And we were the highest campaign behind online General Mills and Publics. Both of these companies match employee contributions. So, our ranking is impressive. We ranked above other high-profile companies such as Nissan and State Farm. The Rutherford County Schools and the county government, which is after all, all of us, were awarded the best campaign in the public service sector, which includes all local governments and Murfreesboro City Schools. The overall best school campaign went to Blackman High School. The best high school campaign went to Smyrna High School. Smyrna Middle won the best middle school award, and Walter Hill Elementary won the elementary award. It's also noting that Walter Hill had 100% participation and one of the highest totals for their category, which is pretty remarkable, such a small school. The best overall special event for both public and private went to Smyrna High School and Laverne High School for organizing a faculty-flagged football game. The game was held during the Smyrna-Laverne Football Week, and all proceeds went to the United Way campaigns. I'm certain that you join me in saluting Mr. Evans and all of our county employees, and what a great and generous county we live in. I appreciate the commission's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, very, very much. Okay, next, Property Management Committee, we're going to call on Commissioner to report on that for us. Mr. McAdoo.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we had approved a resolution for the Sons of Confederate Veterans Request to Place a Flat Tablet in the area in front of the Confederate Monument on the northeast side of the public square. And they, we had a diagram of it. I don't know if I can pass it around if anyone wants to see it. But all it is is a plaque that they would like to put at the base of the statue that's already there. And the cost will be paid for by their organization, not the county. Make sure I point that out. Resolution, whereas many young men from Rutherford County fought in the war between the states from 1861 to 1865, and whereas Murfreesboro Camp Number 33 of the Sons of Confederate Veterans wished to place a flat tablet in the area in front of the Confederate Monument on the northeast side of the public square, naming the Confederate regiments raised in Rutherford County as a Civil War secret centennial project. That's a 150-year project. I think I'm correct on that. And whereas a sketch plat of said monument is attached here to as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein as those set out verbatim. And whereas the Property Management Committee has approved said sketch plat and placement of said monument in front of the Confederate Monument on the northeast side of the public square. Now, therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Murfreesboro Camp Number 33 of the Sons of Confederate Veterans are hereby authorized to place a flat tablet in the area in front of the Confederate Monument on the northeast side of the public square, naming the Confederate regiments raised in Rutherford County during the Civil War in accordance with Exhibit 1 attached here too and incorporated herein. And resolved this 17th day of March 2011, and I so move.
And a second from Mr. Black. Any discussion? All in favor of this, then please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. McAdoo.
I just got one announcement. Next week, we will not have a Property Management Committee meeting because of some of the issues. We hadn't got the results back yet. It's doubtful that we'll have them back by next Thursday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Coggan will be next. We have no Public Safety Committee report and no report on public works. So, we're ready for Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pardon me. Commissioners, we have three items under steering tonight. The first one is a resolution to approve addition to the Commissioner's Handbook. This comes out of concern for resolutions or, I guess, recommendations from a committee that might get tabled or might be, have a specific resolution or part to them that will allow them to last beyond the end of a fiscal year. Therefore, hopefully, this will help take care of that. I'll read the resolution. If you have any questions, we can then discuss it. Maybe I will. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners desires to amend Rule 7, Paragraph D of the Commissioner's Handbook, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rule 7, Paragraph D be amended by adding the following paragraph at the end of said rule. Rule 7, Committees-Generals. D, Authority of Committees. All recommendations made by any standing committee to either the Budget Committee or the full commission that have not been acted upon by September 1, with the appointment of new committees, will lose standing and will be deemed not accepted. Resolved this 17th day of March 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second by Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer an amendment to this. It's very minor. It's only three words, but to me, it makes quite a difference. If we can insert the words "the immediately following" before the word "September," as it's written now, I think it will make this clear. As it's written, it says "had not been acted upon by September 1, with the appointment of new committees." Is that September 1st or the following year, September 1st, when the new commission is put in place? I think if we just add the three words "the immediately following," it clarifies that it's...
Okay, so, so please repeat that.
We're going to insert, my motion is to insert the three words "the immediately following" before the word...
By "the immediately following September 1st?
That is correct.
I have you now. Okay, so, we have an amendment proposed that would insert the three words "by the immediately following September 1st." Now, that's the amended amendment to the motion. Do we have a second to that? Commissioner Black seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment, then please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Now, we're ready to vote on the motion as amended. Commissioner Pete.
Any standing committee that meets in August, the way I look at these dates here, say, Public Safety may have a recommendation that will not have time to get to budget or to the full commission. And maybe other standing committees, the way this is written, I think you need to grandfather in the August committee meetings that may be forwarded. If not, you're going to lose all those and the work that's done by those committees. I'm not able to support this the way it's written without making a change to pick up those committee meetings in August that haven't had time to get to the full commission or to budget.
That was discussed to some degree in that we appoint new committees at the beginning of September 1st of every year. Therefore, you have new people, new committees, and I think the basic understanding was that they didn't think we could bind over to the next committee, which might be a new group of people, a recommendation that had been brought forth and forward. But his point is well taken. It was discussed. Commissioner Jones?
Quick clarification. I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. We could go table a motion within the committee and come back in a year and revisit that motion within the committee, correct?
Oh, you can always reintroduce the recommendation at any point on any committee. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Cope, do you have anything that you could offer that would help us at all? We have two gentlemen here. Commissioner Jordan, we'll let you go. I don't know which one was up first. But do you have anything that would be, let him do a little bit. You go ahead and make your statement. He's looking here just a moment. Commissioner Schaefer? Did you want to say something?
Yes. My question is, why would we even have a commission meeting in September? What could be acted upon?
Well, in September, we normally do only organize. That's all we do is appoint committees, you might say. We don't actually meet officially until...
Well, you know, the middle of the month, so we're going to have a commission meeting basically from August till October. Nothing's going to be done, right?
That's pretty much the way it's happened, I believe.
And right now, it's also the end of June, July, it's sort of like a summer, so what we're saying is that basically, we don't get in and do anything except organize the committees between the August commission meeting and the October commission meeting.
And we don't have a July meeting, I believe. Mr. Jordan?
He kind of hit on what I was going to say. If this is held to point, then what would be the point of committees, any committees meeting after the August commission meeting? Because the committees are, you know, what they're doing, work is just null and void. And there are committees that meet after the commission meeting. I know Health and Ed does. It meets later in the month. So, there'd be no point in having any committee meetings between there. It'd just be wasting time, money, and effort. So, I would hope we would at least make the proper adjustments so we aren't meeting for nothing.
Commissioner Sandlin?
I think we're getting off track here. It's, I brought up the question, you know, about the August deal, but really, truly, this is just tabled thoughts or questions or plans or whatever that may happen in that committee process. It's not stopping our business that we conduct every month. It's business as usual. It continues on. This is just something that's been tabled at that committee level, then it's, you know, September is the deadline on it.
Well, then, if you say something, have verbiage, say something, any recommendation that is over 30 days old or something like that, because that's not in there now. The way it's read right now, anything happens in August, and a Health and Ed committee meeting in August cannot be acted upon in September because there's new committees set forth then.
No, I don't think so.
So, I would just like to see some verbiage. Just say, any, pick a number, any recommendations over 30 days old or something like that. Because you do have to adhere to the law. You cannot just interpret it the way you want to. This is the law to us.
To me, Commissioner, the way I read this is that, and I may be, Mr. Cope can correct me, but the Budget Committee or the full commission that have not been acted upon, in other words, if there has not been a motion made to bring that to the commission. So, in other words, if there's something, for instance, I was to make a motion in committee that this be brought up as soon as something else had been passed, so it would automatically come before you without that committee, that elected or appointed committee being able to vote on it. In other words, we don't need, I guess what we're trying to prevent are recommendations or resolutions coming out of a committee that you didn't get to vote on. So, if there's an election or after the reappointment of those committees, there's a resolution that comes before the full commission from the Budget Committee that you didn't get to vote on, then we're trying to prevent those from coming forward so you can have an opportunity to look at those. Now, if there's a way we can reword that where that is accomplished, I guess, where it meets everybody's approval. That's what we're trying to accomplish, if that makes sense.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Instead of saying that we cannot do this, why can we not just say any, anything for, anything passed by a committee shall be heard at the next budget or commission, at the next appropriate committee meeting? I don't know how you would word that, but...
What gave, what gave rise to all of this is we made a recommendation that the Budget Committee would hear or discuss the development of the Eagle Bowl School proposal at a later date, at such time as we funded or discussed the funding for the schools. And that was months out in the future.
And maybe, maybe we just need to put a recommendation or a resolution that committees cannot determine in a future... that committees cannot determine in a future, you know, more than a month, a 30-day period, like Mr. Jordan said, that a committee will say something.
Okay. We've had, let's see if the Commissioner, not Commissioner, Mr. Coke, do you have any words of wisdom?
Probably not. No, I'm just joking. I can add a couple of things, maybe. I think that there are times that the committees don't want to be hamstrung with a deadline to have to act on something in 30 days. They may want to put something off 90 days or, you know, six months to get more information before they bring it on to the commission. So with all due respect on that, Commissioner, I think that might be, be tying up the committees a little more than they would like. If you're concerned strictly with the August situation and having that go by the board so that that would be addressed, we could add at the end of this proposed paragraph, put down "except as to matters acted upon in the immediately preceding August meetings." So that would exempt August, the way I read it, and if a committee were to act on something in August, that would remain alive until the following September 1. That would in effect give it a berth of 13 months as opposed to the 12 here. And that would allow something then to be deferred in August of one year and still be alive into the next year. At least, that's the intent behind the wording that you could consider if you so chose to do that.
Okay. Did, did you understand what he said there? You would put that at the very end of this paragraph, "except as to matters acted upon in the immediately preceding August meeting."
Correct.
Does anyone wish to add that as a, as an additional amendment?
I should add that as an amendment.
Okay. You make a motion to add that again as to the end of this paragraph we have here, this sentence. Do we have a second to that? Commissioner Jordan, now any discussion regarding that?
Mr. Chairman, we all have amendments.
We've already passed that amendment.
No. Well, amendment, yes, we can, we can act on the motion.
Well, we can still amend. We can still amend the motion. We've already made the one amendment by Ms. Commissioner Stevens. We approved that amendment, and now we have a second amendment.
I'm sure that got voted on, did it?
Sir?
I don't think that got voted on. Check with the...
Yes, we did.
Did you vote on that?
Yes, we voted on it. It was unanimous.
All right. Then you're ready for another amendment?
We're ready, we have this amendment properly made and seconded. Is there more discussion on that? All right. Commissioner Sandman?
I do want you to read it, but, I mean, I don't want this to be used as a tool to throw something 12, 13 months down the road. I, I think we've been conducting business in the past years as the way we're supposed to, and conducting business as county commissioners and representing our districts very well. I think this is something that, you know, a commissioner did in a, in a committee meeting, and I, and it, like the mayor said, I think at any point in time, you can bring this thing back up. Anybody on that committee or that commissioner or anyone else can bring it back up at any time. So this is something that I think slipped through by, I don't think by anybody's fault in this process, but then again, I, I really hate for this to be used as a tool to throw something on the rug for 12 or 13 months. I hope it's not.
Okay. We're, we have the amendment on the table here as, and we've added the phrase at the end of that sentence under Paragraph D, "except as to matters acted upon in the immediately preceding August meeting." That's what we're going to be voting on. Any other discussion? You are then ready to vote. All of you, again, in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
And those that are opposed? All right. So we have two amendments made. They've both been passed, and now the amended motion is on the table. And would you like for me to read that? "All recommendations made by any standing committee to either the Budget Committee or the full commission that have not been acted upon by September 1..."
By the immediately following...
"...by the immediately following September 1. With the appointment of committees will lose standing and will be deemed not accepted, except as to matters acted upon in the immediately preceding August meeting." We're ready for that motion unless there's other discussion. Commissioner P.
Maybe my hearing's slipping. Did you say "meeting" or "meetings" in August? It should be "meetings."
Did I, uh, "meetings" would be, I, I stand corrected. That was a good catch. "In the immediately preceding August meetings." It could be multiple committees. All right. Thank you. All right. You're ready to vote then. Excuse me. Commissioner Allen?
Well, I hate to nitpick this to death, but I do have a question. So we didn't give a lifespan to those August meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you adopted...
Yeah, yes, we have. If we adopted, it gives it...
Just the way that it's read, it just says "except for the immediately preceding August meetings," means they don't apply to the, this rule doesn't apply to those meetings. So I, just the way I'm hearing it being read, I don't, I don't hear that it, that then those are alive until the following September.
Yeah. I think, though, that the, the language as intended was "immediately preceding August," similar to what Commissioner Stevens said, that it's, it's good for that one time period, but then when the next September comes around, it would have lapsed under that wording.
I just want to make sure you're...
Shirley?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of this then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That was unanimous? All right. Thank you. Now, let's see. No, you're not finished yet, are you, Commissioner Coggan?
No, sir. Next, we have a resolution to approve the hiring of outside legal counsel regarding Rockville Meadows subdivision. Whereas, the Rutherford County Mayor has determined, and the county attorney concurs, that outside legal counsel is required to handle the matters regarding Rockville Meadows subdivision. And whereas, Attorney John R. Rucker Jr. is agreeable to handle the matters regarding Rockville Meadows subdivision for Rutherford County at an hourly rate of $150 pursuant to the legal services agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to authorize employment of John R. Rucker Jr. as outside counsel for Rutherford County to handle matters regarding Rockville Meadows subdivision at an hourly rate of $150, resolved this 17th day of March 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandman and others. Any discussion? Okay. Well, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21, yes. Motion passed.
Next, we have a resolution to be forwarded to the state legislators requesting delay of the, delay of enforcement of the Voter Confidence Act. Commissioners, if you remember, we have done this once before. We'll read this, and if you have any questions, we can field those as well. Whereas, the Tennessee Voter Confidence Act requires all counties to adopt an optical scan system by the federal elections of 2012. And whereas, implementation of the Tennessee Voter Confidence Act will be an expensive task required to be funded at taxpayers' expense. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that this resolution be forwarded to the Rutherford County legislators requesting delay of enforcement of the Voter Confidence Act, resolved this 17th day of March 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from several there. Commissioner Jordan, and I believe, Commissioner Schaefer?
If I'm not mistaken, there's a couple of laws kicking around, bills kicking around in the General Assembly in order to postpone this until money can be funded by the state. Are we, we're saying in this that we just want it cut out completely?
Well, we just want to go on record that they passed something that delays implementation of that, and we don't have to spend the approximately $300,000.
Should, well, they have a couple of bills up there I recently read about, and shouldn't we reference them or at least say, reference the bills that are now in the General Assembly? Do we support those bills that are delaying it?
I, I think what we've said here will send the message clearly to them. We've already talked to most of them anyway, so... Okay. We did have a motion and a second. Commissioner P.
I might offer an amendment by here. I think what we're saying is right, but I would add right on the end there, until funding is available from either the state or federal government. I'll offer that as amendment.
Okay. At, at the end of the last paragraph, "until the funding is available from the state or federal government." And Commissioner Cook seconded that amendment. Any other discussion? All right then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Coggan. Now, under other business, we're...
That was the amendment, sorry.
Of your, thank you. That was just the only amendment. Now, Mr. Coggan's motion, what was duly seconded, is now on the table with the amendment. That adds the phrase "until funding is available from the state or federal government." All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Under other business, we're going to recognize Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to bring forth a resolution if the commission will approve that and add it to our agenda, and it's specifically referencing two bills in the state legislature that are, that involve the local election commission. So that's my motion, is to add this resolution to our agenda.
All right. We have a motion and second by Commissioner Coggan and others. Now, all in favor of adding this additional resolution to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And let Mr. P be recognized as no.
Thank you, Commissioners. There are two very potentially damaging bills up at the state legislature that are starting to move that could really affect our local coffers, and I think before they get along too far and pass these bills, we need to go on record as opposing them and ask our legislators to vote no if they have the chance and actively try to stop them. And they're mentioned and described in this resolution. Whereas, Rutherford County government is overwhelmed and frustrated with unfunded mandates from Tennessee state government and the United States government. And whereas, two bills potentially detrimental to the taxpayers of Rutherford County are currently advancing in the Tennessee General Assembly with respect to local election commissions. And whereas, said bills are specifically known and labeled as Senate Bill 756 and its companion, House Bill 1119, and Senate Bill 478 and its companion, House Bill 453. And whereas, Senate Bill 756 and House Bill 1119 would require the county to fund all costs for legal defense in lawsuits, including cases of unlawful firings by state-appointed officials who make decisions in which the county legislative body has no voice. And whereas, if the state's appointed officials make unwise choices that cause the local election commission to get sued, the state should fund all costs related to defending a lawsuit regarding the same, as well as any and all damages awarded to a plaintiff should he or she be successful. And whereas, Senate Bill 478 and House Bill 453 would take away the county legislative body's ability to properly and responsibly budget by giving the administrator of elections total control over the local election commission's budget. As said bills specifically state, the county legislative body shall not have the authority to revise or restrict the budget as submitted by the administrator of elections unless the county legislative body prevails in a difficult chancery court lawsuit as outlined in said bills. And whereas, the duly elected representatives of the Rutherford County taxpayers should have the final say over each county agency's budget, not state-appointed officials or their employees, as this is a clear violation of the constitutional concept known as separation of powers. And now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners respectfully request that each member of the General Assembly who represents Rutherford County forcefully oppose and vote in the negative on each of the above referenced bills. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded forthwith to each member of the Rutherford County delegation in the General Assembly. And that's my motion, Mr. Chairman. I so move.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Commissioner P.
The reason I voted against hearing this, I, I've got a couple of questions and then maybe offer something here, but if this was first seen by steering, which I, that's why I initially said no here, I don't disagree with anything that's said here, but this is the first time I've seen this, and I've seen several other commissioners that are sitting here, and I feel like anything like this should go through our committee process, especially steering, who does handle everything that we do with the state. I mean, that's, that's their job. And I'm not saying that any, any of this stuff is something I would oppose, as a matter of fact, I'd support most of it, but I haven't had a chance to digest it and look at it. I don't like something put in front of me to vote on that I haven't heard anything about without giving it a little bit of time and research or having a committee look at it. My first question is, if we delay this to let steering look at it first, would it still have time for the legislation to hear it?
Okay. The answer to that is no. This bill is moving very, very quickly.
So that's why it was brought forward as it is?
We didn't, we didn't know about it at the previous steering committee meeting. We certainly would have brought it to their attention. I, I wasn't aware of it until maybe a week or a bit ago, so, and the Secretary of State is pushing this bill quickly through the legislative process. We need to let our legislative delegation know that we're really opposed to this.
Well, I, and I agree with all those statements. I just dislike having something put up there quickly, you know, with an understanding that, hey, I can respect that, that it doesn't have time to get to the legislation, but, you know, it looked to me like we did have time. When does the legislative session close, or when do they stop receiving bills?
Well, the bills...
Or recommendations, rather.
February 17th was the last day to submit bills, but it takes sometimes a bit of time for us to get those bills disseminated to us that we even know about them. So we didn't discover this prior to that previous steering committee meeting. We did not know about it. At least, I didn't. I'm not saying it wasn't out there somewhere, but I was not knowledgeable about it, and I have become very concerned about this even before Mr. Stevens brought this to my attention, and I've already been talking to our legislative delegation.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer?
You know, to me, what they're doing, trying to do in Niceville is just like, very similar to the Nissan bill when they passed it on the leasing and ended away with that. But also, this is in reaction to the federal judge's ruling in the election administrators' cases that went before him, and he ruled in favor of the counties versus the state, and so the state now wants to change the law to take them off the hook.
That's exactly what they're doing. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We really need to pass this tonight to send a message to, one, to our legislators that were opposed to this, but, two, to our constituents that were fighting and trying to stop these unfunded mandates from crippling our budget. The first bill that was talked about in here that would make the county responsible for all these legal fees and so forth is very concerning to me because the state delegation or the state election commission appoints our local election commissioners. They pick the people that are on there, so if those people make boneheaded choices, the state should pay for their mistakes, not us. That or let the local people decide who's on the election commission, and then that would be more, be fairer for us, I think. Now, the second bill that's up there gives the election administrator total control over that budget, so if the administrator comes to us with a budget that's five times bigger than it was last year, if this bill passes, we don't really have any choice but to fund it unless we go to court and win this, win in a chancery court lawsuit, like it says, and we all know that we don't need another lawsuit. The constitutional principle of separation of powers, the people elect us as their representatives to allocate money, we should tell the election commission how much money they will have. Their administrator should not dictate to us how much money they will have. So we need to pass this tonight and send a message.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, you're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Now, is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Phillips?
No breakfast or anything like that to announce, but maybe trying to speak on the behalf of fellow commissioners, I'd like to congratulate Gary Farley on his retirement following about 30 years of public service with the Murfreesboro Fire Department. Thank you for your years of service to the citizens of our community, and please accept our best wishes to you and your family as you begin a new life as a man of leisure.
Mr. Chairman, I hope there's another announcement to be made because this announcement is not pleasurable, but Senator Bill Ketrin's father passed away today, and I meant to get to our chaplain, Mr. Schaefer, before he prayed for us, but keep his family in our prayers. The services are tomorrow from 4 to 8, but I couldn't remember exactly what funeral home, but...
Jennings and Ayers.
Jennings and Ayers. So... Jennings and Ayers. So, you may want to go by and visit, but most of all, keep the Ketrin family in your prayers.
Thank you. Anyone else have an announcement or any other business? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.